Role call, so councillor Hunter.
I'm here.
Councillor Anderson.
Evening, I'm here.
Councillor Black.
Present.
Or Provost Campbell.
Present.
Betsy Lord Provost Cordell.
Bailey Dawson.
I'm here.
Councillor El Nakla.
Present.
Councillor Flynn.
Good evening, present.
Councillor Lynn.
Present.
Councillor Mills.
I'm here.
Apologies have been received for Billy Roberts. Councillor Boom.
Present.
Bailey Soares.
Yes, I'm here.
Councillor Short.
Here.
Councillor Smith.
Good evening, I'm here.
Councillor Tolland.
I am here.
Bailey Keenan.
Present.
Councillor Cookshank.
Present.
Councillor Finnegan.
Good evening, I'm joining online.
Councillor McKeever.
Present.
Councillor McCarvin.
Present.
Councillor Scullan.
Evening, I'm here.
Councillor Shears.
Evening, I'm here.
Received apologies for Billy Wright. Billy McPherson.
Good evening, present.
I've received apologies from councillor Coleman. Councillor Creighton.
Good evening, I'm here.
Councillor Duncan.
Here.
Bailey Scott.
Here.
Mrs McBean.
Hello, I'm here.
Mrs Little.
Here.
Mr Gibson.
Here.
Miss Barclay. Mrs Davids.
Present.
Mr Anderson McGinnis. Miss Dee.
Present.
And that completes the role call.
Okay, can just actually go on to the next item of business please? Oh, just to say, Bailey Roberts has just indicated that she's, uh...
I'm here. Sorry, I couldn't get connected.
Okay, Laura, just continue with the business. Okay, we are just again talking about a few technical issues, but I will just... Okay, we'll try and make a start with us. Councillor Cookshank, I see you have a question, so I'll come to you first.
Thank you, Convena. I'd like to reservedly welcome this report and the reservations or some of the details at the end of the report. One of the questions is, this is a very mixed report with some new improvements, but the area where there has been some drop off in performance is the S4. You've explained within the report that the S4 group are the group most impacted by the COVID lockdowns. If some of these groups stay on to S5 and S6, what are you and our schools doing to support these young people to get the best results possible? Thank you.
Yeah, pass over to Mr Fleming.
Thank you very much, Convena. Thank you for the question, Councillor Cookshank. There has been a drop off if you compare year on year, but if we look at this particular cohort of S4 leavers, there has been value added from their levels of attainment when they were in S3. But you make an important point around the levels from 2020 state on, as this is a group we have been tracking in terms of the progress rates. Every school has specific interventions planned to ensure they continue to add value for these individual young people who remain in school. And for those young people who have left, we are not forgetting about them. And it had a meeting this afternoon with our strategic lead across the city to make sure that they are still in and sustain a positive destination as well. And so I'm happy to provide more detail, but hopefully that answered your question, meanwhile.
Yeah, you happy with that, Councillor Cookshank?
Can I ask a further question please? And if more young people were to stay on beyond S4, would our results be better? So in general, what are you doing to get more young people to stay on at school beyond S4? Thank you.
Okay, my pass back to Mr Fleming.
Thank you again for the question, Councillor Cookshank, because it's very important for us that all of our young people are in a positive destination. For most young people, indeed, as this report shows, those young people who stay in our school, particularly those from the most deprived areas, according to post codes, certainly they do really well. And so again, there's our strategic city plan and through our partnership with City Development and other partners around these positive destinations that we have. But again, each individual school has to make sure that a curriculum is adaptive and suitable to the young people who are in their school. And that will be different context by context. So again, happy to show the detail of that with the committee if that helps. Thank you.
Okay, I suspect, Councillor Creighton, you might have put your, a comment in the chart into the wrong chart. But I think you've got a question, so I'll come to you first. And if not, well maybe we want to, Councillor Shears.
Yeah, I do. Sorry for that, Convena. I appreciate that. Yeah, I have a question. My question is to officers. First, I'd like to congratulate every pupil for their attainment successes and their hard work and also obviously the staff for supporting them and doing so. It's clear from the information at 5.2, 5.5 and 5.6, for example, that there has been some dips. And obviously councillor Cookshank did allude to that in 2023. Look, we're not going into S4 school leavers, et cetera, but the explanation 4.5 about the removal of adaptations and assessment of 24 obviously is there in the papers. But does that fully explain the dips? And obviously, we've had a lot of conversations about our young people and positive destinations. Just wondering, are officers confident how this is turned around and what measures are being put in place to make sure this gets turned around for our young people?
Okay, then pass to Mr Fleming.
Thank you, Councillor Creighton, for the question. There are a number of factors involved in, as you alluded to, one of those is that we're not comparing like with like due to the different examinations themselves. And also then the different ways of calculating, if you like, the results throughout the senior phase. And what we're confident in is the plans of adding value to each and particular year group, as we've done for this year group. And what's most important is our strategic priority as a service in the city to improve and to sustain positive destinations of our children and young people. And that includes those remaining in school. And so again, happy to provide further detail around the detailed plan of how we're doing that with the committee if that's helpful.
Okay, does that answer your question, Councillor Creighton?
Yeah, further detail would be great in time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Shears.
Thanks very much. My question's in relation to the table on 8.4 about care experienced children leaving school. And obviously really positive to see 100% in this report, but it does seem to be very inconsistent with a couple of 100%. And then we dip down into the 70s and 80s. Now, I know some of that is due to the small numbers where one child can make a big difference to the percentage. But it would be good to know what we're doing to try and stabilise this. Obviously, 100% is the goal, won't always be possible. But what actions are in place to try and keep this less up and down and more on a steady path? So we can see something is consistently working for care experienced children.
Okay, Mrs May.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Convena. Thank you for the question, Councillor Shears, yeah. It is good to see 100% there for our care experienced young people. But you're right, say that that fluctuates quite a lot over the years because it's about very small numbers. And so one, one young person can really make the difference. But I'm pleased to say that our schools, working in partnership with our social work colleagues, are tracking our young people who are care experienced as a particular group. So that as we, we look across how our young people are doing at every school's, we're focusing in on our care experienced young people to see if they're needing additional interventions to make sure they get that positive destination. So they are tracked as a specific group.
Okay, you happy with that, Councillor Shears? Okay, I don't see anyone else coming in. So one last thing I will say before we agree, this report is obviously, this is all about attainment. And a number of our young people across the city are currently going through their exams. So I think it would be appropriate to wish them all the best through the exams and hopefully we'll see some great results next year. But with that, can this report be approved? Agreed? Okay, thank you.
Right, welcome to the neighbourhood regeneration, housing and estate management committee. Laura, if you could lead us up, please.
Thanks. So item one, declarations of interest. Are there any declarations?
I don't see any declarations. Thank you.
A deputation request has been received from the chairman of the UK RAC campaign group, Mr Wilson Chowdhury, in regard to item three, tenders received by head of design and property. Are committee happy to hear the deputation?
Committee happy. Yep, thank you. And Mr Chowdhury, I believe, is online for this one. Are you there, Mr Chowdhury?
Andy, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you. So you have seven minutes for your deputation, Mr Chowdhury. Then there may be questions for you afterwards if you remain on the line. Thank you.
Thank you.
You can head off anytime you want.
Thank you. Provost, councillors, thank you for the opportunity to speak today. And I stand before you on behalf of homeowners across Dundee affected by the structural crisis caused by reinforced auto-claved irradiated concrete rack. This issue, though acknowledged in schools and hospitals, has been disastrously overlooked when it comes to private housing. The consequences are devastating, both financially for countless residents in your city. I'm here to represent not only the 526 council tenants affected by the rack, but also the desire has been caused or could have foreseen. Council, to ensure that your insurance location will be fully covered by the cap, that any remedial works and restoration of their home is the same condition they're in.
Excuse me, sorry, Mr Chowdhury, I'm afraid. I don't know if it's the same for everyone, but you are breaking up and coming in and out. So I don't know if you may want to switch off and come back in and see if you're any clearer?
Okay, one second.
Whilst Mr Chowdhury's doing that, Billy Keenan, do you want to circulate the amendment you have? Would that be possible? Yep, thank you. Yep, thank you. Are you back in, Mr Chowdhury? We're able to clarify, Laura, if he's rejoined or not. Not yet. Thank you. I think whilst we're waiting for Mr Chowdhury to come back online, shall we just go back to the agenda and go and deal with item two whilst we're waiting? Is that okay? Thank you, Laura.
So item two, tenders received by head of housing, construction and community services for approval.
Okay, I'll just open that up for questions. And there's a question from Bailey Scott.
Yeah, Convena, I wanted to ask why another half a million is being put into this when we agreed to one and a half million in for the same reason back in January? And why these aren't now being picked up under the cyclical roof replacement schemes? I've not seen a tender coming forward for quite some time for roof replacements. And to me, it seems it's going to be more expensive to react like this, having money to do urgent repairs, more expensive to the tenants and more expensive to your occupiers as well. So I wonder why we're continuing to do urgent repairs and not now picking these up in a cyclical way?
Yeah, Louise, could you take that, please?
Yeah, thanks for the question, Bailey Scott. So this is our annual budget for non-cyclical roof repairs that come through the capital works. And so we do have a programme of roof replacements cyclical that is reported to committee. One of his tenders and tenders will be forthcoming within this coming year.
This note to the one and a half million we agreed in January was just for the new financial year. This is the figure you're putting in for this year.
Yes, the one and a half million was for the last financial year. This is for this.
Okay, thank you. Bailey McPherson, you have a question, thank you.
Thanks, Convena. Just following on from what Bailey Scott had to say. There's two million pounds of expenditure roughly in this tender report. But if I'm being honest, there are other astonishing lack of detail, specifically how many individual houses are covered by the heating kitchen bathroom or rewiring that amounts to 452,500 pounds? How many roof replacements for £489,000? How many adaptations for over £900,000? And I, I take Bailey Scott's point as well about, if you like, individual work as opposed to whole estate, for example, for rewiring. I think all I'm asking for tonight, I'm not expecting officers to pull up the, the detail of that tonight. But could I perhaps ask Mrs Butcher, if she could perhaps circulate to members of the committee some more detail about the number of properties that will benefit? Having agreed this expenditure tonight, because I think it would be helpful, just at the end of the day, we are responsible for scrutiny of the public purse. And it would be, I think, helpful if we were given some information regarding the number of properties that will benefit from these individual house works that are being proposed tonight. Thank you, Convena.
Thank you, Laura. Sorry, Louise, do you want to come in?
Yeah, no, thank you for that, Bailey McPherson. And we will be able to provide further information. But I would highlight that, for example, these will come up as and when identified. So it could be that in one property, we're undertaking a kitchen, bathroom and rewire at one time. And in other instances, it could be that we're just replacing a kitchen, for example. And so it is dependent on as these arise throughout the year and we can come back and provide that to members.
Totally get that point, Louise. That's perfectly reasonable. I think we're looking, I think I'm looking for a sort of ballpark indication as to how much we would expect in the way of properties. But I fully expect that, I accept that you will have situations where you're doing more than one intervention. I think it would also be helpful, and this goes back partly to Bailey Scott's question. If in the response that you send round elected members, if you could give some indication as to, if you like, the rationale as to when you make individual interventions as opposed to whole estate interventions. Because quite clearly, if you're doing a number of streets rather than just an individual one-off property, then it will become more cost effective overall if you do it as a, if you like, a whole estate approach. So I'd be grateful if that could be included in the response that you send round. But I'm grateful for your reply. Thank you.
Thank you, Bailey McPherson. And Councillor Flynn.
Yeah, that's good. I just ask officers, just to clarify, in 4.1, the projects tend to represent the active work streams. So there's, I would be correct in saying there's no way you can actually tell what projects will need done until they're required. And therefore getting details, and this is really quite difficult and possibly impossible in some instances. They may get some clarity on that, because I agree with the officer, with the only person, really Scott, there's a quite a number of substantial amount of money being allocated. But this is to make sure we have got the funding there to do the works as required. For example, adaptations which could change from occupational therapy and occupational health recommendations on a daily, if not weekly basis.
And if you want to comment, Tony?
Yeah, thanks, Convena, thanks. Councillor Flynn, Councillor Flynn's correct. And this is a reactive programme, so as with some difficulty we have. And trying to estimate completely in terms of a finite number, but we will obviously take a look at Bailey McPherson's question and come back with as best a response as we can to answer the specific query that was raised. Thank you.
Thank you, Tony. I see no further questions. So with that, is that approved? Thank you. So we'll go back to item three on the agenda, Laura. I believe Mr Chowdhury is back on the call. Mr Chowdhury?
Can you hear me?
We can so far. I will just go back to the seven minutes for your deputation, Mr Chowdhury. And if you have any more issues, we'll maybe raise it and maybe try putting your camera off. It might help you continue, okay? But I'll let you start with your seven minutes.
Thank you. Provost, councillors, thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I stand before you on behalf of homeowners of reinforced auto-claved irradiated concrete, otherwise known as rack. This issue, though acknowledged in schools and hospitals, has been disastrously overlooked when it comes to private housing. The consequences are devastating, both financially and emotionally for countless residents in your city. I'm here to represent not, not just the 526 council tenants affected by rack, but also the 336 private homeowners whose lives have been upended by a crisis they neither caused nor could have foreseen. For council tenants, we are simply seeking a clear assurance that all costs associated with temporary relocation will be fully covered by the council and that any remedial works will include restoration of their homes to at least the same condition they were in prior to any chosen intervention. For homeowners, lack of support and financial crisis, and many residents in affected areas such as Whitfield, Menzies Hill, Locky and Craigie Bank, along with potential but disputed hotspots like Barn Hill, Mony Fife and Dryborough are trapped. They cannot sell their homes, cannot remortgage except at unaffordable rates with their incumbent provider and cannot insure their properties meaningfully. Insurance policies exclude rack related damage and there is widespread fear that insurers will unfairly link unrelated claims to rack to avoid payouts. These are not abstract fears, they are real crisis affecting real families right now. Let me speak plainly. Let me speak plainly. Historical data cited from the BRE and the Institute of Structural Engineers that highlight safety concerns about RAC panels does not deem them defective, but it fails to account for key past demolitions, 400 homes in Baslin in the 1990s, and 86 condemned properties in Westlow in 2004. These events were not minor anomalies, they were early warnings, and those same institutions failed to reflect or on or include these precedents in their guidance. This omission renders their advice incomplete and inappropriate for addressing RAC in ex-council or low-cost housing built in the same era. The mental health toll on mortgage prisoners. The situation has created a wave of mortgage prisoners, individuals and families unable to move, remortgage or refinance, they're living under roofs that have been classified by structural engineers, and even government guidance as life expired and liable to collapse. The toll on mental health is escalating, families are anxious, trapped in homes they cannot leave and cannot afford to repair. Government funding disparity, the UK government has committed to remediate RAC in public buildings, yet private homeowners have been excluded. This is a grave injustice, why should those who were never informed of this hidden risk when purchasing their homes now bear the full financial burden? Council inaction and delayed engagement, I must speak to my own repeated attempts to raise this matter with the council for over eight months. I've sought the opportunity to deliver a deputation, I wrote multiple times, and contacted every local councillor urging that affected residents be given a platform to voice their concerns. I was told a deputation could not be granted because RAC was dotted on the agenda, but how can it ever appear on the agenda if residents are denied the opportunity to speak in the first place? I even prepared a draft motion and requested that standing orders be set aside to allow direct engagement between homeowners and local decision-makers, yet no response was ever received. The silence is not just neglected, borders on complicity. Even worse, it appears that the councils have actively avoided open discussion, thereby prolonging the suffering of residents and eroding public trust. Conflicting and misleading information. Residents have received deeply conflicting messages from the council. Ray Lowe, the Housing Asset Service Manager, stated in writing that Dundee City Council offers grants of up to 40% for RAC works. Yet councillor Kevin Keenan has explicitly contradicted this in a conversation with a local resident, saying no such grant system exists. How are residents meant to plan or act when the council cannot even agree internally? Worse still, council correspondents appear to endorse a support deck solution, installing a structural deck beneath existing RAC panels. Yet this proposal may not satisfy mortgage providers or insurance companies. What, if anything, has the council done to ensure such solutions meet their approval? When a local resident raised this concern, Mr Lowe responded dismissively. I would be, also be interested in to see the statement from NatWest stating that a mortgage would not be offered on a property with a support deck below a RAC roof, as I can find no evidence of this online. Rather than offering to investigate, he shifted the burden back onto already bewildered homeowners, abdicating the council's responsibility to provide clarity and reassurance on such a critical matter. Homeowners do not believe such measures will restore property values or restore mortgage eligibility, and will not restore insurance coverage. It is, as residents have described, a wasteful sticking plaster. Pilot projects and lack of transparency, we are aware of pilot RAC remediation projects being trialled by, potentially being trialled by the council using Morsin Construction. While we welcome any attempt at solutions, there must be transparency, consultation with residents, and a recognition that only full replacement of RAC components, not support structures, will address the crisis effectively. Residents' voices must be heard. Local residents like the Chair of the Dundee RAC Campaign, Bwayne Hoskins, who might help establish the local group, have rightly raised concerns that surveys being carried out are visual and not in line with institution, the Institution of Structural Engineers guidance. There is no evidence of deflection measurement, crack logging or hammer testing. This is not compliance, it's cost cutting. Many homes contain RAC planks more than 60 years old, according to government briefings and Scottish Alert of 2019. These panels have already exceeded their safe lifespan and are vulnerable to sudden collapse, especially if water ingress is detected. These are ticking time bombs, in Tilly Culture Tree, residents had just two hours notice to evacuate. We do not want Dundee to become the next tragedy. Moral and legal accountability, let us not forget that these homes were built and once owned by the council in a previous guise. They were sold through government right-to-buy schemes without disclosure of RAC defects. There is a clear moral, if not legal, responsibility on the council to provide redress. What maintenance was carried out on these panels before selling them? What warnings were to buyers? The silence is deafening. Homes were bought by people who trusted that they were acquiring safe, habitable homes. Many are elderly, they cannot return to work, they cannot access loans, they lack the savings, these properties, the same to proceed with a loan. These properties are in areas highlighted in Scottish indices of deprivation, they were affordable houses, and now they are unaffordable liabilities. The scheme of assistance exists for precisely this kind of crisis. You can create a shared equity model, you can use discretionary grants, you can offer sundry debt recovery loans. I'm currently working with Clackman Shire Council on precisely such a model. There is no legal or policy barrier to you doing the same, only political will. Moreover, your delay is striking, it has been over a year since RAC was first identified here, yet progress lags behind every other Scottish council.
Sorry, Mr Chowdhury, if you could begin to wind up your deputation, please, the seven minutes have come and gone, but I'll let you just wind up.
Okay, and I'll just, I'll just read out my call to action. Today I asked this councillor to do five things. One, acknowledge RAC in private homes as a critical housing crisis and place it permanently on the agenda for urgent action. Two, commit to transparent and expert-led surveys for all in full compliance with Istracte guidance. Three, use the scheme of assistance to offer grants, misshare options or sundry debt recovery loans for private homeowners, especially those on low income or in shared roofs. Four, clarify the existence or absence of any financial support schemes for affected homeowners, including definitive statements on grants. Five, advocate for a Scottish or UK-wide national remediation fund that includes private homes, not just public buildings. Six, ensure residents have access to deputations and direct communication with councillors going forward without bureaucratic obstacles. This issue is not going away, the longer the council delays meaningful action, the greater the human and financial cost will be. We must act now, not after the first home collapses or the first family is made homeless. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that, Mr Chowdhury. Now I will open it up to the chamber if anyone has any questions for the deputation. Okay, I see no questions, so thank you very much for coming along tonight, Mr Chowdhury.
Thank you.
Now, with that, we will come to this report, which seeks approval to delegate authority to the executive director of Corporate Services to complete a direct award call-up from the SPA framework as set out in the appendix, and to prove the acceptance of the tender submitted by the contractor as set out. The project will carry out remedial works to RAC roofs implied by properties allocated by housing for the pilot works. The properties have been selected to implement and test a practical and economic solution for each house type containing RAC and to establish suitability for possible future rollout across the RAC estate. So I will first of all see if there are any questions for officers on this report. Councillor Flynn, you were in first?
Yeah, thanks, Convenor. To just clarify with the officers with regards to some comments that was made in the deputation with regards to the support deck etcetera not meeting standards, or a wasteful sticking plaster. Can we get some comments on that with regards to your expertise within this field and the work that's being proposed to be done?
Thank you, Councillor, for the question. The Istracte provide various forms of remediation as examples. A full structural deck supporting the RAC below is one of those examples of remediation. So I'm comfortable that that provides an appropriate solution for supporting RAC.
Thanks very much for that. And there's also just ask councillors again with regards to the stock we have and the review that's been carried out, just to give a, commit a bit of background to where we are with our stock and the survey that's been carried out.
Thank you. We have completed cycle one of our stock investigations and are comfortable that none of our properties are in a critical condition. It's, the RAC is in terrible condition, but throughout, we continue to monitor that. We're midway through our cycle two, and we aren't seeing any particular deterioration in the RAC. Our inspections are in accordance with the Istracte guidance.
Thanks very much, Laura.
Thank you for that. Bailey Scott, please.
I just want to ask a question about the total cost of the contract. The contract is valued at £300,000, but the non-contract allowances and fees and contingencies come to £200,000, which is like two-thirds of the contract in allowances and contingencies, which is considered more of a percentage than we see in other contracts that we've agreed to. I just wondered what the reason is for that, please.
Gary, please.
Thank you, Bailey Scott, for the question. I think we need to recognise that these are pilot repairs, and the level of contingency that we've applied to that aligns with the fact that these are pilot repairs, so it follows, you know, industry guidance on how we might go about looking at contingencies for things that are somewhat experimental, although an established method of supporting RAC.
Yeah, Bailey Keenan, thank you for that, Gary. Okay, I will now allow in Bailey Keenan to talk to his amendment.
A fairly simple amendment, I suppose I should react to Mr Chowdhury's comment in relation to grant funding, because I have went back to people who have asked the question about the funding sources for this pilot scheme, and said that I didn't consider that to be anything that was open for grants. So hopefully that clears the matter up with Mr Chowdhury's listening. I realise that obviously it being a pilot scheme, it's been, you know, very expensive, as Bailey Scott's pointing out, but, you know, obviously there'll be research and development into this, and hopefully it comes up with a very cost-effective solution to deal with the problem that we've got in Dundee. But the ultimate part of the motion is really to try to help out everybody in the city that's affected by RAC, and it's really called upon the chief executive to write to the Housing Minister and the Cabinet Secretary for Finance, looking at a fund that's laid aside that would help support people that have got RAC in their homes, including local authorities and social rented landlords, in the hope that these problems could be made structurally sound. And I do hear what our engineers are saying about grown properties, but no doubt someone in the private sector may well be in worse condition and, you know, that need to be addressed. So I'm hoping that this could be accepted.
Well, I'm absolutely, yeah, I'm afraid I'm not going to accept it in its entirety, Bailey Keenan, because obviously there's a glaring omission about one government not being included in this, but what I am willing to do, because this is a housing rent account matter, and we're referencing private properties in this amendment, what I am willing to do, as Convenor, is write to the Housing Minister and write to the Cabinet Secretary for Finance, inviting them through to a meeting to discuss the RAC issues we have in Dundee, and to see what comes out of those conversations. But in its entirety, I cannot accept that amendment, but I am willing to do that if that's acceptable to you.
I'm happy to accept that as a step forward, and I hope that that is far enough at the moment for the people that are lobbying on RAC to be satisfied that there's some movement in Dundee towards addressing the issue.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Flynn, would you like to come in, please, in second?
Yeah, just to second yourself, Convenor, but Bill Keenan's obviously agreed to what you propose. I think it's right that we probably invite the Housing Secretary, and the Housing Minister, sorry, through to the city to discuss the concerns that many have within the city over RAC, and I think it's important that we actually do that. But there has to be identified, this was in Mr Chowdhury putting his deputation, this is a UK issue as well, and I think the UK government have got a right to contribute in many ways to alleviate this problem within the city and other cities and towns across the country. So I second yourself and I support Bailey Keenan, in the sense that we try and get the minister here, and we have a meeting to discuss the concerns.
Thank you for that, Councillor Flynn. I am going to let Bailey McPherson in for a comment.
Yeah, my comment is basically, I think that's welcome. Inviting both the Minister for Housing and the Cabinet Secretary for Finance and Local Government to discuss that is welcome. I would just make the plea that I think, on behalf of the council, I think it would be helpful if we invited all parties represented on the council to participate, because I think we all have similar concerns in relation to the crisis facing those who are living in homes that are blighted by RAC. So I would hope that can be considered. Thank you, Convenor.
It can be considered, Bailey McPherson, and we will include group leaders and Bailey Scott for that meeting. Okay, so with that, can that vote be approved? Thank you, that is the business.
Monica, over yourself, please.
Thank you, Convenor. Item one, declaration of interest, are there any declarations?
I see no declarations recorded, so just move on, please.
Item two, request to UK government to halt all cuts to disability benefits. This item has been placed on the agenda at the request of councillor Toland.
Thanks very much, and I'll just ask councillor Toland to speak to it. Go to you.
Thank you.
In advance, can we circulate the motion as well?
That's not the right one. Mine's much longer. I don't know where to start. I'm going to start last year when the Labour Party came in on an absolutely massive mandate in the general election. I think that people were so sick and tired of the cruelty of the current Conservative, of the then current Conservative government, that they voted the Labour Party in good faith on a mandate of change, because change is what was promised by the Labour Party. And that mandate was absolutely huge. The Labour Party could have chosen any path with that mandate. They could have chosen any policy, but what's actually happened is we've come in amongst a raft of massive cuts, and the recent round of cuts, of course, is a cut to the disability benefits. The Labour, current Labour government have chosen to cut away at some of our most deprived communities. This is going to cause massive further poverty and inequality, and it will cause a worsening of our health outcomes as well. Now, we can see how poverty and health connects if we look at life expectancy. Since the 1920s, we had an increase in life expectancy of around about 25 years, we gained 25 years. But since 1920, since 2012, I apologise, something happened and it began to stall, and then it began to reverse. Life expectancy is now lower across all four nations, but it actually gets much more harrowing than this, because if we look at the gap of life expectancy and healthy life expectancy, those in our most deprived communities actually have much lower healthy life expectancy now, as against those who sit in our least deprived areas. If we look at healthy life expectancy, there is a five-year decrease over the last decade for our most deprived communities. That is five years less healthy life. Forty-six point six years of healthy life in our most deprived communities. That is a 24-year difference between those that sit in our most privileged communities. If you sit in the least deprived areas, you get 24 more years more healthy life. That is a result of the austerity agenda. Now, the Glasgow Centre for Population Health concluded that the principal driver of these changes was the UK government austerity measures. was the UK government austerity measures. Austerity has actually made us sicker as a society and it's hacked and slashed at some of our most vulnerable communities. The conservative austerity cuts were absolutely brutal. It was 540 billion worth of cuts and it targeted our most deprived communities. That was the whole point of the austerity agenda. It targeted those communities. And that has had huge detrimental impacts on our health. There's no getting away from it that poverty has brought poorer health. Fifty percent of people who are in poverty are now disabled. Austerity has made us sicker. And the Labour government, the current Labour government, have chosen a path that will increase this austerity and make it even worse. The Department of Work and Pensions' own research tells us that a quarter million people will be put into poverty as a result of these disability cuts. That's in addition to the 700,000 people who are already in poverty and we'd be pushed into even deeper poverty. We have a situation where after over a decade of conservative led austerity that has caused massive poverty, inequality and worsening health outcomes, these very same people will be punished by these disability cuts. And that's been done by the Labour Party. And I think that that's what I find particularly galling about this. We know from the motion that, of course, the uptake of universal health element in Dundee is particularly high. So as councillors here in Dundee, we will be acutely aware that the effect of these cuts will be particularly traumatic for the people in Dundee. Where is the change that the Labour Party promised? Because it seems to me to be more of the same. It's exactly the same austerity agenda, but under a different Labour Party guise. And I find that absolutely heartbreaking. I struggle to figure out what the Labour Party stand for now. If it's not for social justice and equality, then what does the Labour Party stand for? If it's not for protecting the vulnerable, then what does the Labour Party stand for? Labour's history is remarkable. I'm a historian of trade and I've done Labour history. The increase in life expectancy after the 20s was actually because of the Labour Party. They pushed that because they had a policy of protecting the vulnerable and pushing equality. The Labour Party in 1945 set us on, embarked us on a path that we are still fighting to retain today. That spirit still remains in Scotland, but I'm not convinced it remains in the Labour Party anymore. Is the Labour Party really going to be the party that once protected our vulnerable, but are now bringing in cuts that actually punish our most vulnerable? I'm pretty sure that there's loads of people in the Labour Party who are absolutely horrified and deeply shamed by these cuts, because I think that there will be an understanding within that party that we cannot allow our communities to go through this again. And I'm going to thank the 40-odd Labour MPs who have acted according to their conscience and stood up and said that they could not and will not support these cuts. It's particularly sad to see, however, that there's not one Scottish Labour MP that has spoken out against this. I hope that the Labour Party group here are fighting these cuts inside the party with every breath that they have, because this is a test for the spirit of the Labour Party and for the spirit of what drives Scotland. This is about social justice. This is about equality. But most of all, it's about protecting our vulnerable. It's actually about making sure that people don't get sicker. I think that if the Labour group sit back, if any of us sit back and allow these cuts to happen, we're going to condemn yet another generation to deeper poverty and worsening health. Labour's austerity will make us sicker and it will target our most vulnerable and dramatically decrease the health outcomes. And the need to act to rebellion, please, of the Labour Party to be to support this motion. Because if you don't act on this, you can't say that you didn't see the consequences of this.
Thanks very much, councillor Tolland. A very heartfelt deputation of motion there. And I'll bring in councillor Smith to follow up.
Thank you, convener.
Sorry, interrupt you. Can you maybe take the motion, the amendment down?
Thank you. I'm seconding your motion, councillor Tolland, because we raise our children with the hope that one day they will stand on their own, live independently and shape their futures with confidence. But what happens when the very systems designed to support them are stripped away? The Labour Party cuts to disability benefits are not just numbers on a budget sheet. They're a direct attack on the independence and dignity of some of the most vulnerable in our society. These reductions don't just impact adults with disabilities, but families, carers and parents like me who fight every day to ensure our children have the support that they need to survive. My own child will be affected by these cuts and the reality is heartbreaking. The assistance that would help them gain independence and contribute meaningfully to society is being eroded, leaving them facing unnecessary obstacles instead of opportunities. We do not raise our children to be dependent. We raise them to live, to contribute, to succeed. But that requires a foundation of support, fairness and accessibility. Disability benefits are not handouts. They are investments in autonomy, security and inclusion. Removing them forces individuals into poverty, isolation and dependence on family members who may themselves struggle. A nation is not judged by its wealth, but by how it treats its most vulnerable. We must hold decision makers accountable and demand policies that uplift rather than exclude. Labour's decision to cut these benefits shrinks possibilities and silences voices. We must speak up, not just for ourselves, but for those who rely on us to fight for their future. Together, we must stand against these cuts because independence is not a privilege, it is a right. Thank you.
Thank you for that. And I see that Billy Roberts has declared an interest. That can be noted. I could also see that councillor Shears has got an amendment, so if we maybe put that up on the screen and I'll go to Bailey McPherson for this first comment.
Could I maybe just suggest in terms of standing orders that we maybe let the, given that we're in the formal position, let, you know, I'll let councillor Shears and Kevin Keenan second him, go first and I'll speak immediately after that, convener.
Okay, thanks very much for that. Pass it over to you then, councillor Shears.
Yeah, thanks very much. And one thing I want to make clear is that we're not looking to change the text of councillor Tolland's motion at all. And as some of you might have seen, I have spoken out publicly against these cuts, given my own background and what my family do. What I'm asking to be included is simply tap on the end and maybe write to Neil Gray, ask him for a recovery plan for Calms, Tayside. And the reason I'm adding it to this is what councillor Tolland didn't mention, I think is really important to mention, that most people impacted by these cuts will be neurodivergent people rather than people with physical disabilities. And now, as we've seen, and I'm sure we've had contact with from constituents, issues in our own family, is that neurodivergent children at the very first stage are looking to get an assessment, a diagnosis, so they can access the help that they need, whether that be schooling support, additional benefits, therapy, anything. In Tayside, they don't have that right in this city. Now, it's a long list anyway, but at least if you're on the list, you had a bit of hope that it might be coming. But as it stands, it's just not there. If you have a child that is struggling, if a school identifies a child that is struggling, that may be neurodivergent, that needs this testing at the moment, all you can access is a little bit of support. There's a lot that you cannot access without a diagnosis. And it's not just these children it's having an impact on. It's affecting the whole school estate when we have children in schools that maybe need one-to-one care, maybe need special adaptations due to their neurodivergency. They won't be able to access these and there will be disruption in the classroom, not through their own fault, but simply because they're not accessing the support that they need. So I'm hoping that councillor Tolland will just allow this small piece to be tapped on as we are talking about mostly an impact on neurodivergent people. And there is impact from the closure of the waiting list for neurodevelopmental assessments within Tayside just now.
Okay, thanks for that. And I'll bring Bailey Keenan to second you.
Yeah, I mean, I think councillor Shears says, oh, I would hope that there was cross-party recognition that this is a health issue that needs to be addressed in the city as well. For many years now, even although a child's had a diagnosis, they might not have been able to access the medications because there was a shortage there and doctors were told that they weren't able to prescribe them. And it was difficult enough to get the medications, even if you had a prescription, to get something that suited. So there really needs to be that diagnosis for children and, and a route to the medication that can make a difference to them. As regards others, disability and the welfare cuts, then obviously councillor Shears wrote to the minister clearly stating out that he was not happy with it and, no. I think there's many people around the table who wouldn't be happy with either. Quite happy, I'd be very happy for people that need support to get that level of support. I suppose the bit that if it was going to be putting on things that were said, quite happy for people to have a go at the government, but the SNP have been in charge of health in Scotland for 18 years and life expectancy in that time has went down. And over that 18-year, endless number of Dundee partnership meetings, when we've had health around the table, have made that an issue. And so much so that the director of public health or a previous director of all public health said he shared my concerns. He didn't take any action, but he shared my concerns. I think there's much we could do that would improve the life expectancy of people. And especially when we look at cuts and we're looking at cuts like cutting Kirk Park, cutting Camberdown Golf Course, there's hardly a bowling green left in the city. We're not doing much to promote exercise. And if we don't start making sure that health come in, that we are about to support on prescription, medicate or social prescribing, then I think that we'll see health still. There is much we could do here. So I don't think you can really blame everything on Westminster. There's a responsibility in health in Scotland for this to look after people's health. Quite happy to support the motion that's put forward. I'm hoping you can accept amendment, be good grace.
Thanks very much for that. And personally, I don't think we have any reason not to accept the amendment. But I'll take over to councillor Tolland in a second to get her comments on it. Primarily, I'm quite happy to write to Neil Gray. Well, I think the whole point of what's been presented in front of us is the challenge to the cuts to disability by the UK government. And I think that's the important part here that we're putting forward. We could actually say this is an NHS issue, but I think it's quite happy to do this. I think when we talk about targeting the elderly and the vulnerable, this is what seems to be the target process. I'm sorry to say, from the Labour government currently, we don't seem to have much change other than going back to a Tory austerity programme. And I think it's a recollection and we have to concern ourselves that this is a direction that Westminster are going down, then it has to be a very concerning direction for those sitting on the right of this room, indeed. But I'll bring in Bailey McPherson. You were first on the list.
Thanks, convener. And we'll certainly be supporting councillor Tolland's motion. And although, and I sort of alluded to your own comments there, convener, I'm not sure how well the issue of Calms fits with councillor Tolland's motion. That said, I think it's a very serious issue, albeit not particularly directly related to disability benefits. And therefore, our group have no problem, as I suspect you do now, convener, in accepting the Labour amendment. I would just make one comment regarding councillor Tolland's motion. And that is that Liz Kendall's name is incorrectly spelt. And I would just say also that councillor Tolland did say no Labour MP had expressed, a Scottish Labour MP had expressed opposition to the welfare cuts. And in fact, to be fair, one of the 42 MPs that she mentioned is actually a Scottish Labour MP, Brian Leishman, to his credit. I always think it's very sensible not to be too party political budgets. I seem to recall councillor Shear saying he wouldn't take any lessons from the Lib Dems on austerity. That was during the budget meeting in February. I think what prompted him was the fact that Labour was increasing the school meals cost in their budget and we were not. And that Labour and indeed the SNP were cutting the school's budget in that, and we were not. But the point I would essentially make here is, here we are, just a matter of a few weeks later, and councillor Shears doesn't have to take lessons from the Lib Dems on austerity. He has to look no further than his own party. And I think therefore, making a comment like that was perhaps a little bit unfortunate. I think, I have to say, to be fair, I think councillor Tolland's motion, despite that very minor point about, you know, Liz Kendall's surname, is actually very well written. And I have to say, I give a special credit to councillor Smith for her very non-partisan and very heartfelt speech as well. I think everybody must be deeply concerned by the proposals in relation to welfare benefits, particularly PIP. These will, as both councillor Tolland and councillor Smith said, affect the most vulnerable people in society and the people less, least able to bounce back from these cuts. And I think, given that, we strongly support what is in the motion tonight. And the Liberal Democrat group will indeed be supporting the motion, including the amendment, given that you have also expressed support for the amendment, convener. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. And I'll just note that councillor Rome has just declared an interest, if that has been recorded, with the amendment being included. Can I bring in councillor Anderson, please?
Thank you, convener. This is also personal for me. I spent a decade of my life campaigning for the rights of disabled people to get individualised support and person-centred care. And I just wanted to focus on the scale of these proposals. So it's clear that 800,000 people in England and Wales will lose personal independence payments as a result of these proposals. Half of them will lose their existing entitlement after a review and the other half won't qualify for the payments following the higher eligibility entitlement. So 800,000 people won't get PIP. 2.25 million existing recipients of the health entitlement of Universal Credit will be impacted by the freeze on the payment, which will continue until 2030, 2.25 million. As PIP is a passport to the health entitlement at Universal Credit, a further 730,000 people will fail to qualify who would qualify today. And in addition to that, 150,000 carers in England and Wales will also be poorer. For anybody who's counting, that's a running total of 3.2 million families in England and Wales who will be poorer, 3.2 million. A quarter of a million of those people, including 50,000 children, won't just be poorer, they will be plunged into poverty. Now, these aren't statistics from a disability campaigning lobby saying this is a bad idea. These are the numbers from the UK government's own website. And the numbers are estimated unintended consequences, they are targets. So the UK government are setting a target to make, you know, how many was it again? 3.2 million families poorer and put 50,000 children into poverty. And because they're actually redistributing the money from adults with disability, 96% of the families who will be poorer will be families who are supporting somebody with disability. This is pretty a staggering redistribution of poverty, not a redistribution of wealth. Liz Kendall, the UK Secretary of State for Work and Pensions, a woman not known for her compassionate empathy, has said that welfare recipients are holding our country back. So she believes that people with disabilities are holding our country back, so she's going to make them poorer. I'm glad that my Labour colleagues on this council share the grave reservations that we have about these cuts. And I hope the ghosts of Beveridge, Bevan and Boydor are stalking the corridors of the Palace of Westminster, reminding some of the Westminster Labour Party about the roots. Now, in Scotland, we are essentially replacing the personal independence payment with adult disability payment. So we are doing everything in our power to protect adults with disability in Scotland from these cuts. Shirley Anne Somerville has said that she will not be financing the cuts from the Scottish budget on the backs of disabled people. But when four point eight billion is taken out of the welfare budget in England and Wales, the block grant adjustment or barna consequential are significant. The Scottish Fiscal Commission estimates that Scotland's budgets will be cut by one point five million as a result of these changes in twenty thirty. Now, we will do absolutely everything to protect the adult and child disability payments here in Scotland. But it's hard to imagine what we'd do about universal credit changes. I assume that the Westminster Labour Party will do what they always do, which is support the cuts from the benches of Westminster and tell the Scottish government to clean up the mess. And believe me, we would protect Scotland, but it can be much easier if we didn't have one hand tied behind our backs. So my final suggestion is, as we write to Liz Kendall, we might want to suggest that they follow our progressive taxation principles. The Scottish Fiscal Commission has said that the Scottish income tax changes here bring in an additional one point five billion. If Westminster Labour copied our progressive tax policies where the majority of Scottish taxpayers pay less tax than they do in England, that would raise at least sixteen point five billion pounds. Surely it'd be better to tax the wealthiest just a wee bit more than to rob the poor. Bevan wouldn't have blinked, he would have done it in a second. I'm very glad you're voting with your conscience and voting with us.
Thanks very much, councillor Anderson. And I can't disagree with anything you've actually said there. I think it's a recognition again of the Labour group here. They see the issues that Westminster are causing the residents in this city alone, never mind the country. And I think it's important we recognise that going forward. Bailey Scott, please.
Thanks, convener. As you might imagine, I don't agree with everything that's been said tonight and a lot of what councillor Tolan said and the way it's worded. But what I do agree with is that it's not acceptable to target the most vulnerable groups, especially when it's to try and make up for mistakes that have been made elsewhere financially by the government. I do think that the benefit system needs to be reformed because we have to ensure that it's sustainable and provides a safety net going into the future decades. But it's essential that it happens in a properly thought out and well evidenced manner and not in the rushed approach that's been taken by the Labour government, just to try and unbalance their books. It's worth noting, though, that there's been a huge increase in claimants for disability benefit post pandemic. It's risen from two point eight million people in two thousand nineteen to three point nine million now, which is one in ten people of working age now receiving some sort of disability benefit. That's not sustainable and there surely must be a better way of being able to support people through difficult times. And even in the Scottish government, the fiscal commission has said that there are issues for fiscal sustainability due to the Scottish government's growing welfare bill. So to make sure that we can provide that safety net in the future, there does need to be reform of the benefit system. But it's how you go about it. I don't think the way the Labour Party are doing is the right way to go about it. So I won't change the wording of the motion, I'll support it, but it's with the knowledge that I don't agree with everything that's been said, but I agree with the spirit of the motion.
Thanks very much, Bill Scott. And I think the spirit of the motion is really important here. I think it's highlighting a number of issues. And I think councillor Anders touched upon the fact that the Scottish government haven't mitigated so much of the bad decisions made in Westminster. But I'll bring in councillor Tolan just to sum up if she wants.
Yeah, thank you very much. And I really do appreciate the fact that the Labour group have voted with their conscience on this issue. I think that it would have been difficult to do otherwise. And I hope that, you know, the spirit of the nineteen forty-five Labour Party are still alive and well and sitting with you guys. I will kind of pick up a point from Bailey Keenan though, because again, I think there's maybe a misunderstanding here about the relationship between poverty and poor health. I'll repeat again, the Glasgow Centre for Health noted that the reason that we have a lowered life expectancy rate was directly because of the austerity agenda cuts. Health may be devolved, but we cannot control the health of our population if they are going to be subject to stringent, cruel and brutal cuts. The health consequences of these disability cuts from the Labour Party will come down the line. And what we actually can't have is this constant narrative that the Scottish government has to clean up this mess. I'll repeat again, austerity causes poor health. It's austerity that does that. The NHS may be devolved, but it is still the responsibility of UK Westminster policies that drives that poverty and poor health.
Thanks very much. And I'll take the amendment as it is and include that, although, as I said earlier, it's probably an issue for the NHS. But I'm quite happy to write on behalf of the city to the Cabinet Secretary, see what can be done. And in the light of that, if this councillor Shears wants to add anything to.
No, I'm just grateful for accepting it. And seeing as I was named by councillor, sorry, Bailey McPherson. I'd just like to remind him who is in power when this whole austerity kicked off. So I'll still take no lectures, but thank you very much for taking the amendment.
Okay, thanks very much. And that was read, and we'll move on to the next item, please.
Thank you, convener. Item number three, local government benchmarking framework performance indicators twenty twenty-three, twenty-four. This report is for Norton.
I'll just move on. As I said, local government details the performance of Dundee City Council for the financial year twenty-three, twenty-four. And based on local government benchmarking framework, there's a number of performance indicators and it focuses on forty indicators and most align with the priorities of the council plan. I see councillor Duncan first then.
Thanks, convener. Yeah, I've just got a bit of a question and a comment about the information at five point two. Last week, the first minister restated in his programme for government, not for the first time, that his top priority was eradicating child poverty. Most audible is therefore concerning to read at five point two that of the fourteen total measures in this area in Dundee, six of them are not on target. I also note in the table on page six that some targets where the short term trend is positive, the longer term trend is not. So I'm just wondering, can I ask officers, could they give more information on what specific ways being done to improve the performance with regard to the performance indicators mentioned on page six that are not on target? Thanks, convener.
Yeah, thanks for that, councillor Duncan. But we've just been discussing the issues with child poverty and the causes around that and a number of other issues. I hope you understood what was being said and heard clearly, the issues that were being had and discussed across the chamber with regards to acceptance of the Labour Party to the challenges and the hopes to cut the disability benefits as well and what the Scottish government is actually doing. I'll bring in Andrea to answer your question in the first second.
Yes, so quite a few of the indicators in the child poverty section are around attainment. And so we did have a report earlier tonight about senior phase attainment. So there is a number of actions that are in the report. So we're looking at both primary and secondary attainment. And I'm sure that the head of education could give a bit more detail if you want on the attainment. So five of the attainment ones are read. In relation to the general child poverty measure, we don't have the most recent data for that one. We're expecting that to come in at the end of May, beginning of June. And that will feature in a bit more detail around just general child poverty work when we bring the Fairness and Child Poverty Action Plan to committee. And within that, you'll see quite a lot of the work that the council is trying to do to, you know, increase uptake in benefits. And then obviously there's links to our employability and strategies as well, which obviously mean that if people are working, then they're less likely to be in poverty. So there's a lot of work that will go on. And the Fairness Action Plan will actually detail a lot more around that. But I'm happy if you want to bring in the head of education on the attainment figures.
Yeah, can I bring the head of education, who wants to talk or report either?
Happy just to say that these are areas of priority in our service plan. And also to indicate, as we saw earlier in the earlier report this evening at our own committee, that we measure different things in different reports. And so it's important to do that cross referencing across the various ways. Because what you saw earlier in our leavers data is the focus on attainment and initial destinations, which, you know, had a mixed picture, but some positive. Indicators around initial destinations, for example, for our fourth, fifth and sixth year leavers. Whereas the local benchmarking framework measures something different, doesn't use that virtual comparator where we see that we're making a difference in lots of the metrics. But in the benchmarking, it looks at specifics like SEQF qualifications across all local authorities and included on a family group, whereas the leavers data is looking at that specific group of young people. So sometimes, you know, the data doesn't map over very well and there's also delays. The recent paper gave you the most recent update on a leaver's attainment, which was different to some of these measures. But just to assure committee that these are all priorities in our service plan.
Thanks very much for that, councillor Duncan. Is that your questions?
I'm grateful for the additional information and I was just assured, going back to your opening remarks, I was listening to the foregoing debate quite keenly, as I hope that we all were. Thanks, convener.
Thank you for that. And Bailey Keenan, please.
Will we ask about the number of care experienced children? Attendance rates at school seems to be going down. Also, in relation to achievement in the school, I was seeing that as a bit of a backlash of the cuts to the attainment challenge fund that we're seeing the sort of figures going down. And can I be asked another point in relation to the moving it into positive destinations? Because when I was reading this and it says that there was less people going to positive destinations. Also, I received a letter from our trade unions that suggested that they weren't going to be taking on apprentices in Dundee contract services next year. So I'm hoping that's resolved with the chief executive. And I hope that everybody in this room, knowing that we must do whatever we can to make sure that the children leaving our schools reach positive destinations, would not have supported that going forward. It's really important that we train up apprenticeships and make skills available for to be an exemplary employer in the city that looks to send that message to others.
Thanks very much. And in that instance, I'll just bring in the chief executive, just answered the last point there, just for clarity.
Yeah, thank you, convener. And thanks, Bailey Keenan, and I can't help but remember that we are progressing with the recruitment of apprentices within the construction services for financial year twenty-five, twenty-six.
Thanks, the chief executive for that. And I'll bring in Mrs May for the first point, if that's okay. Or Mr Flannan will do it for both. Thank you.
Thank you very much, convener. Thank you, Bailey Keenan, for the question. As we referenced earlier, improving attainment and improving attendance is a key priority for the service. And as Mrs May referenced also earlier, we do focus in on different cohorts and groups of young people, including our care experienced children, young people. I'm pleased to say that we are improving, we look at a fortnightly attendance and we send out detailed reports to schools on termly attendance. And we have improved the attendance rates for our care experienced young people to date. From this time last year, we've improved the primary attendance by one and a half percent overall, percentage points overall. And in secondary, we've seen an improvement of over two point three percent in the secondary sector of care experienced young people's attendance at school. That then is helping to improve attainment. We saw earlier about a hundred percent of our care experienced young people entering a positive destination. We checked this afternoon and of all those young people who entered a positive destination, they're all still in a positive destination. And the tracking tells us all our care experienced young people currently in school are on track to achieve a positive destination. Hopefully that helps, but I'm happy to provide any further details if I have an answer to that.
That's great. Thanks very much for that. Answer your question. Thank you. Councillor McKeon, please.
Thank you. The purpose section of this report tells us that it focuses on the forty indicators that align most closely to the priorities set in our current council plan. There are in fact a hundred and eight indicators in total, and perhaps unexpectedly, local authorities are not required to report on all of these indicators, the number having been increasing over time. What is important then is which specific indicators we choose to report to elected members. And my question is, the thing that jumped out at me is where is housing and homelessness? I'm surprised that apart from some information on SHQS and non-emergency repairs, the report is silent on demand and supply of housing, specifically social rented housing. I do appreciate that information on housing will appear in other reports that come to committee. But considering that the Scottish government declared a national housing emergency in May of twenty twenty-four, it is telling that there is no specific national indicator on housing demand and supply. Perhaps that accounts for the absence of performance data on housing and homelessness in the priorities brought before elected members. Food and shelter, nothing matters more. I would appreciate officers' comments.
Thank you for that. And as I said, it was a hundred and so many, a hundred and eight, hundred and eight target points here. And I think bringing them all to the committee would be quite difficult with regards to this is based on twenty-three, twenty-four. But I'll bring in Mrs Calder to some background to why we choose these forty.
So I suppose quite a lot of time is spent with the council leadership team, looking at the council plan and then looking at the indicators and trying to give, you know, as wide a range as we could. But we've also highlighted that there are other indicators that will come in through service plans. And also there's indicators that the health and social care and leisure and culture will look at. So I think in total, we look at over nearly ninety indicators. But we continue to review it each year. And within the service plan for housing, they will have indicators within there which are more aligned to housing. And there's usually quite a bit of detail at the housing level within the service plan. So we try not to duplicate it across all the different plans, but still give elected members enough information. And we'll continue to look at that. So we're always willing to take feedback and go back and look at it and have further discussions. And at the council leadership team, there is quite a lot of detailed discussions around these indicators, the benchmarking indicators, but a wide range of other indicators and voids and things like that are discussed quite regularly at the council leadership team. And there will be other improvement actions that would come about, not just from these indicators, but from other indicators.
Good question, Dorothy.
Could I just make a comment? I think the point I was trying to make here was it's about priorities. And there's nothing more important than food and shelter, as I said earlier. And I did expect, since we're in the middle of a housing emergency, that housing and homelessness would be a priority for elected members to hear about. I look forward to a report coming to committee on housing and homelessness.
Yeah, thanks for that. As Calder said, it comes with a different service plan for that certainly being mentioned and brought forward at a future date going forward. Councillor Black, please.
Thanks, convener. I was just looking at the proportion of discretionary housing payment, which of the funding that we've spent. So we are spending a hundred and ten percent of our allocation, which gives you some indication of the need which people in the city face to cope with the the high payments that they have to find or the high amounts of money that they have to sign to pay their rents. I'm interested that that we have spent something like three and a half million pounds on discretionary housing payments. And it's a good indicator of the effect that Westminster government policies have had on the people of the city and on our budgets and also the Holyrood evidence budgets. And that the majority of that three and a half million, seventy-seven point four percent, was for mitigating the bedroom tax. And benefit cap mitigation, five point one percent. Huge amount of money, which we are basically mitigating so to protect the people of Dundee from the policies of the previous Westminster government, which are being continued by the current Westminster government. So it's just worth noting the difficulties that that places us and also the government in Holyrood under. Thank you, convener.
Thank you. And your points well made. And that's probably a consequence to the team within the council to make sure that the support is given to all those that can and need it at difficult times. Councillor Nakle, please.
Thank you. I just was seeking clarification that of course, well, first of all, I agree with councillor McKeon that the issues are very important, but also is fair work and fair pay is so important about lifting people out of poverty. So I just noticed in the report and I just wanted clarification. So I just noticed in the report and I just wanted clarification that actually in the rest of Scotland, it seems that the gap between fair pay and gender equality has increased. But actually, it's the council, we've worked really hard on that. And from the indicators, actually, we've managed to narrow the gap. Is that correct?
Yeah, Andrew.
Yes, that's correct. And that was reported at our last committee when we brought forward the Equalities Mainstreaming Report. There was quite a bit of detail just around that gender pay gap.
Just to say that's really commendable and that's really how we lift people out of poverty by giving them a fair wage. So thank you.
And just say welcome back as well. It's good to see you and congratulations on the home new baby this year. Thank you. Won't see any further questions, so we'll just move on. If that's agreed, thank you.
Thank you. Item four, tenders received by Executive Director of Corporate Services. This report is for your approval.
And just the tender, it's quite obvious what clearly what it is. I see no questions, so we'll take that as agreed. Thank you.
Item five, sourcing strategy for the supply and delivery of swimming pool chemicals. This report is for approval.
Again, sourcing strategy as per normal process. I don't see any questions or comments. So again, we'll take that as agreed. Thank you.
Item six, sourcing strategy for a flexible workforce management system. This is for approval.
Again, another sourcing strategy for the committee to consider. No questions, no comments, we'll see that as agreed as well. Thank you.
Item seven, sourcing strategy for the provision of school to college coach transfer services. This is for approval.
No questions or comments, we'll see that's agreed as well. Thank you.
Sorry, convener, I have an amendment. It's in the text.
Sorry, I don't see anything at the moment. Is that amendment to be sent in to the officers, Bailey McPherson?
Yes, the officers can circulate it. It is in the meeting chart, the fact that I was notifying you of an amendment. Okay.
It has just arrived. It just popped in the chat there. Apologies. So I'll just hand over to yourself, the amendment to be put on the screen, please.
Yep, I'll note the ten in the committee along. We, as a matter of principle, have taken the view for a long time that where tenders have, will or have the potential to go over two hundred thousand pounds. We feel that the delegated authorities should only be up to that level of two hundred thousand pounds. We think five hundred thousand is far too large and does not ensure proper transparency. For that reason, it's a very minor amendment to the report at two one B, changing the last figure at two one B from five hundred thousand to two hundred thousand. Thank you, convener.
Thank you. And I see councillor Duncan wants to second you, so I'll bring him in.
Yep, let's just formally second Bailey McPherson. Thanks.
Thanks very much. As per the previous motions and amendments like this, I will not be accepting this. So I just need a second of place. I'll second you, convener. Thank you, Bailey Sawyer. So we'll just move to the vote, please. Veronica.
The motion by the convener and seconded by Bailey Sawyer is that the report be approved as submitted. The amendment by Bailey McPherson and seconded by councillor Duncan has been circulated. Convener.
Motion.
Councillor Anderson.
Motion.
Councillor Black.
Motion.
Lord Provost Campbell.
Motion.
Deputy Lord Provost Cordell.
Motion.
Bailey Dawson.
The motion.
Councillor Al Nakla.
Motion.
Councillor Hunter.
Motion.
Councillor Lynn.
Motion.
Councillor Mills.
Motion.
Bailey Roberts.
Motion.
Councillor Rome.
Motion, please.
Bailey Sors.
Motion.
Councillor Short.
The motion, please.
Councillor Smith.
Motion.
Councillor Tollan.
Motion.
Bailey Keenan.
Motion.
Councillor Crookshank.
Motion.
Councillor Finnegan.
Motion.
Councillor McHugh.
Motion.
Councillor McCarvin.
Motion.
Councillor Scullin.
Motion.
Councillor Shields.
Motion.
Bailey McPherson.
The amendment.
Councillor Crichton.
The amendment.
Councillor Duncan.
Amendment.
Bailey Scott.
Amendment.
So that's twenty three for the motion and four for the amendment.
Thank you very much. That's agreed. Thank you. Can you just move on, please?
Item eight, tenders received by the head of design property. This is for approval.
For details of tender receiving following sourcing strategy for DCA, the gallery roof lights blind and light replacement seeks an approval acceptance thereof. Additional works have been added into the project during design development, bringing the total project cost to seven hundred and fourteen thousand approximately. Detailed information related to the tenders, including appendix one. And I'm asking the committee to approve the tender. Ayes. Oh, let's see. Councillor Anderson has declared an interest as a member of the DCA board, I suspect. Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments? Sorry. As councillor Scullin, we'll take as declared that you're on the board. No, no further questions or comments. So we'll say that's agreed. Oops, apologies. Councillor Short.
I've got that wee time lag as well by the looks of it. And I just wanted to say how delighted I am that the DCA have had something more exciting news this year with their three year funding and now this additional capital spend to support them. And I have to say, right at this moment, I've lost my son because Dundee is going through the ropes. And that's the place where he disappears to see all these horror movies. If it wasn't living with me, it wasn't bad enough. However, the DCA obviously has a special place in the city and it's great to see us supporting them in this way.
Thank you very much. And we'll just take as a declaration from all board members. Thank you. Don't see any other comments or questions, so that is agreed. Thank you very much.
Item number nine, members' salaries. This report is for noting.
For noting. Any comments, questions? Nope. And good night.